Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're almost at the appointed hour. Soon as the clock strikes seven, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for Monday, January twenty-four, twenty-two. I'll call the meeting to order. And our items for discussion tonight include a very interesting presentation by the folks with Partners for Parks. It's a public-private partnership feasibility study update, and for this, we have Dave Betts, who will begin the presentation. Perhaps he's waiting for a drum roll. Well, Mr. Betts.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
But first of all, I want to thank you guys for supporting Partners for Parks over the years and for allowing us to come and share the results of Phoenix Rhythm Study. And I'm Dave Betts, and I've been a member of Partnership for Parks for a number of years. And also, I was the Chair of the Playground of Sports Silicon. And Ally is here, and I'm looking for Sally, alright. Sally Sanders is the President of Partnership for Parks, and our Vice President is Ally Lutteri. And we've been working on this, on this project for about fifteen years or more. And I think Ted Weir came up with the idea. And it kind of didn't, didn't so, so much progress until around two thousand seventeen. And we have, we have done a feasibility study, and we have the financial pro forma that we'll share with you tonight. And we'd like to share the results of the feasibility study, and Al Hove will do that for us. But I gotta tell you, I think we knocked it out of the ballpark as far as the response of so many people in Lakewood. And as I, as I mentioned to John and Jason, the park really is a love affair with Lakewood. Everybody loves the thing. They love it for all sorts of crazy reasons and good reasons. But the feasibility study we entered into was to make sure that we would have the staffing necessary to pull this forward. And John, who was the guy that protected the?
James Greer.
Dave Greer did the working papers for the feasibility study. And what I'd like to do now is introduce you to Al Hove. Because Al is the guy who did the study, came up with the, with the matrix. And he enlightened you. I know you have, you've probably seen the feasibility study. Each, each member should have had. But Al, are you ready?
Sure. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave, for your leadership, and I'm very grateful to Partners for Parks, the Board of Directors for their vision and service to the community, and of course, to the city of Lakewood, members of the City Council and staff for joining with Partners for Park and your financial support of the study, but also for your willingness to be interviewed and sharing your opinions and perspectives. I'm very, very grateful, and everyone on the council contributed, and that was most beneficial. It's also my understanding that council members are well-informed about this project because not only were they interviewed, but also received a hard copy as well as a digital copy of the feasibility study results as well as a two-page executive summary. So having said that, I don't want to get into too much detail, but for the questions that you might have in the proposed three-year, proposed budget for the project will also be presented by the Finance Director afterwards. But with that in mind, let me provide an overview of the feasibility study results. And of course, I'm pleased to address any questions and go into any amount of detail on any of the twenty questions that, that we asked. Of course, the purpose of the study was to test the program appeal for this exciting H Barn project. This idea to restore and renovate these iconic, this iconic barn structure, and then to renovate it into a multi-use facility for the community. So to test that program appeal, also the availability in the private sector as well as from public revenue sources for the necessary funds that it would take. We tested seven million dollars with this project, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, those results as well. But to test the availability of public and private support for the project, also the availability of leadership, especially as it relates to leadership in the private sector. As Partners for Parks would be the face of the fundraising campaign effort that would be underway as it relates to the private sector, different than the public revenue sources that would also be contributed to an exciting project that has been proposed as a public-private partnership. This study, as you may recall, lasted five months. We began in April. There was a planning session that took place in April and May. Then we interviewed in June and July, and then we did our analysis in August. There were seventy-five persons who were interviewed. Thirty-four of those were interviewed in person. And they were, on average, in one-hour interview. And what was terrific about all of you having participated in the interviews is you have a pretty good sense then of the kind of ways that these questions were asked and presented. Of course, with everybody, there was, be a difference in terms of the emphasis that the interviewees would have undertaken. I had two colleagues that joined me, Emily Happy and Jim Husaugen, were part of the interviewing team. All persons were provided a preliminary case for support prior to being interviewed. So everyone was pretty informed about the proposed project. Nobody came in there as an empty vessel, but they were able to come with a real focus as it related to this particular project. And as a consequence, everyone, I believe, had a good baseline from which to base their opinions and perceptions as it related to, to the project. What I'd like to do is perhaps summarize the findings and conclusions. Again, I'm happy to go into detail on any one of those, but for purposes of, of leaving room for questions and also delving into the areas that the council would be most interested in, I'll not spend too much time in going through each and every particular question. The first three questions were, were interesting because they began to test on what people's impressions were about city personnel, the city governance, as well as the programs with an emphasis on, of course, the arts project itself and the arts programs there at the city. They yielded very, very favorable impressions. And if I might just take a moment, respondents were overwhelmingly favorable, ninety-four point twelve percent towards city Lakewood programs. And there, there were a lot of representative comments that spoke to where those percentages came from. But by way of example, especially the area of Parks and Recreation, people just thought that the park system was a community treasure and indicated how events were family-friendly, accessible, creative, inclusive. Many, many positive comments with regards to that. Similarly, as it related to city personnel, eighty-eight point two-four percent, people were significantly favorable towards city of Lakewood personnel. They believe these are public servants, often don't get the recognition they deserve for their outstanding teams, the way that they lead day-to-day, the work and the accomplishments that, that they enjoy as part of being part of the city staff. And similarly, as it related to governance, respondents were significantly favorable as well. Nearly seventy-seven percent had the impression that city governance was very strong. The council works well together, strong city managers, strong city managers in the past as well. Many hold the belief that Lakewood has exceeded incorporation expectations. Even those who shared with me that they were against incorporation prior to the decision that Lakewood would incorporate. So I think that it was very favorable to see the impression that people had as it related to programs and personnel and governance for the city of Lakewood. The fourth question is, is, is interesting as well because that tested what people felt about Partners for Parks as a fundraising group. This was a little bit more of a nuanced question, so I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail there as well. Because the impression of the board was very strong. They recognized that these were movers, they were shakers, they were involved in all of the fraternal organizations, the great organizations that are part of, of the city of Lakewood. They were raising tens of thousands of dollars a year in all manner of kind of park improvements. And so these were names that people were aware of and were highly respected. I asked the question as it related to Partners for Parks as a nonprofit organization, as it related to them as a fundraising group because this is where the nuance to the question came. People recognized that this was a strong group, but they had concerns as to the capacity, that is, the capacity of Partners for Parks to move from raising tens of thousands of dollars to raising millions of dollars that would be required for a project such as this, understanding the way that they're currently constituted. And so it did have this nuance, and so there were a number of mixed opinions. Twenty-six, almost twenty-seven percent joined the majority opinion. That was fifty-eight percent of people very favorable about Partners for Parks. But twenty-six percent had a concern whether or not they had the capacity to do this project on their own. And so that was an important question that we took forward as well. Five people were overwhelmingly favorable as it related to the need to raise construction funds for the renovation and, and restoration of H Barn into a multi-use facility. How often do any of us find a hundred percent of respondents in support of anything? But indeed, they did here, and it was very, very strong. And we went into a lot of details, as you know, from, from the interviews to really delve, you know, deeply into that. But that really was overwhelmingly favorable as to the need to raise construction funding. You know, question seven talked about the level of support that there would be for this project and what people saw as their priority order. And you may recall that question because we identified, would it be perhaps the regional economic development aspect of this project? Or might it be the history and preservation aspect of this project, preserving and protecting these iconic structures? Or might it be the community need for a multi-use event facility there at Fort Stillcom Park? What was interesting is across the board, it was almost split one-third, one-third, one-third. That is, one-third of each of the individuals picked that, each of those as their top priority, regional economic development or the historic preservation or a multi-use facility for, for the greater community. What this begins to suggest is that there is a broad base of support for this project. Not everybody considers it their first priority, any of those threes, but fortunately, this project touches all of those threes. What that suggests then again is that a very broad-based appeal for the project itself. The questions eight, nine, ten, and eleven sort of speak to what folks were beginning to share that they really began to consider this a legacy project that would, that would attract broad-based support. And when they were asked about what would be the best way of doing that, you may recall the question, we kind of probed in the area of, well, should it be publicly funded because it's owned by the city of Lakewood? They would be maintaining it and caring for it, and so why would they not just do it on their own? From the private sector side, private sectors always step in to do wonderful things as it relates to needs that are in the community. And so why shouldn't the private sector go ahead? And if they really want to have this facility, why don't they come forward and just take it on and support it themselves? The third option that we explored was the public-private partnership and overwhelming support. Eighty-eight percent believe that the public-private partnership was the most significant appealing way in which seven to seven-point-five million dollars, eight million dollars, that range of funding that would be required to do this project would be the most effective way to raise those funds as well as would have the greatest appeal in the community. Questions twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, they identified potential donors and campaign leaders. Spent a lot of time on that question because we wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to have these confidential conversations that would allow people to look at our table of investments. You may recall, we established a table of investments that looked at the number and the level of gifts that would be required for a project of this nature to be successful. And then I would ask them who they knew that might have that potential as it relates to individuals, foundations, corporations, businesses. And so we got an awful lot of wonderful information that helped us look at potential leaders as well as major donors that were identified in confidence to address those questions as it related to that table of investment. We also, in questions twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, identified some potential campaign leaders. Recognizing that leadership is just one of the key requirements for orchestrating a successful public-private partnership. And so we really focused in on three particular leaders, honorary chair or co-chairs. And we kind of identified that as somebody who would bring immediate credibility to this particular project. And people would see these men or women in a way that they'd say, wow, if they're involved with this project, this is something I want to be engaged with. Similarly, with a general campaign chair or co-chairs, we queried, we queried about, about that as well. And this would be more kind of you roll up your sleeves, marshal the troops, and really lead. And we got some wonderful names as it related to potential general campaign chairs and co-chairs as well. And then we, we looked at this idea that there would need to be a project manager, a campaign manager, an organizational director, whatever that name might be, that would be able to assist Partners for Parks in the actual orchestration of a project like this. Obviously, would need consultancy, but these sorts of projects always have a, a lead person, a staff person because these projects are usually most often volunteer-driven, but staff-managed. And so we really looked at what are the roles of what someone in that position would, would look like. And that was also part, you may recall that in the feasibility study report itself, there was a definition of the role for a campaign manager. In sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, there was a strong percentage, it was ninety percent plus, as we began to query folks as to their willingness to participate in the project such as this as a volunteer. And then secondly, there was another question, their willingness to actually contribute to a project like this. Again, both of those questions came out over ninety percent in terms of willingness to participate in the project as well as willingness to contribute to a project of this magnitude. And then question nineteen was sort of interesting because what we did is we, we said, you know, when you look at these things that are really important to, to you, where you place your philanthropic dollars, these priorities that you have, when you think about those things that are most important to you, those nonprofits or the church or whatever that happens to be for you, where would a project like this fit vis-à-vis those other philanthropic priorities? And what was interesting is, is it really ranked very, very high. A strong eighty-five percent see this project as high or medium in terms of their own philanthropic priorities. So today's point, when he says, you know, knocked it out of the park, you know, what he's saying, and I, and I concur. There was a tremendous amount of enthusiasm for the merits of this project, for the timing of this project, for the desire to preserve and protect these iconic structures before many felt before it was too late and struggled with, alright, what would I be willing to do myself? And who do I know out there in the community that would, would become part of this, this team? So that was kind of the findings and, and, and the conclusions as it relates in a summary sort of fashion to the feasibility study. From those findings and conclusions, we were able then to prepare some recommendations for the city council's consideration and for Partners, Partners for Parks Board. And one was, there is, it is feasible for the city of Lakewood and Partners for Parks to enter into a public-private partnership to raise the revenue that would be required to preserve and protect the H Barn complex and to renovate it into a multi-use facility for the community. The suggestion was to launch a campaign. This campaign would last thirty-six months. The first nine months were considered the quiet phase of the campaign. In that quiet phase, you may recall from the study, we would engage in strategic conversations. So those have been under, those have been underway for some time. Talking with task force members, we've had several meetings with, with the board. We've had conversations and meetings with the city manager. So strategic conversations as, as to next steps have been underway. Within that first nine months, we would also develop a plan of campaign to implement a public-private partnership. This really goes into lots of details in terms of how such an effort, a project would be implemented. When I use the word campaign, I use it somewhat reservedly, meaning more the private sector aspect of this project, recognizing that it's a public-private partnership. And that's not a verbiage maybe that the, the city is, is as, as customary with. When I think of campaign, it has a beginning, it has an end. It's a great way to enlist volunteers. They know why they're being enlisted and, and what their role and responsibilities would be. Also, within that nine months, we would establish a legacy campaign task force that would include influential and affluent individuals from the community. We would enlist campaign leadership, referencing the names from the feasibility study that I mentioned as it relates to honorary chairs, general campaign chairs. We would continue building as we have been working on. I think my first conversation with Dave was about three years ago, wasn't it, Dave? And we've been sort of looking at, how do we go ahead and begin to build this donor database, you know, for an effort such as this? So we would continue that prospect research during that, that nine months, firming up the number and the level of, of significant donors. As you may recall, these kind of efforts normally about ninety to ninety-five percent of those funds that are required come from five to ten percent of those particular donors. Many will be involved. I trust there will be hundreds of gifts that will, will be engaged, persons that will be engaged in this project, but there will be some major gifts that will be very, very significant. So that prospect research is important from that point of view. We'll also conduct what the study talks about in terms of awareness activities. There's really three types. One is, is sort of the one-on-one meeting with executives, movers and shakers in the community, sharing the results of the feasibility study, engaging their, their interest in the project and hopefully being able to enlist them in a meaningful way, commensurate with their ability, their time. There is also be group meetings, and this would be, these could be gatherings that might take place at the pavilion in people's homes. You think about house parties. I know all of you have been involved in those in the past. They're very, very effective because you can fill up a room really easily. You have a really intimate conversation about the project again, sharing the results and giving people an opportunity to begin to step forward into the, the, the project planning. And then the last one is also because it's a, it's a public-private partnership to engage a regional summit where we could invite people from the region to be part of this particular project as well. And then to conduct, you know, foundations and grants research, but also ongoing board development. So as it relates to Partners for Parks, two things are really taking place for them. One, there is a campaign readiness for them to be successful with this project. But, but like a right and a left arm, or like the public and the private, as we use that analogy of right and the left arm, for Partners for Park, there's also the organizational capacity that would be built. So those would be the two things that would also be really amped up, ramped up significantly during that first nine months. So there would be nine months of, of quiet phase. There would also be some would sort of test, drive the private sector campaign as Partners for Parks and the task force will be asked themselves to consider their own multi-year pledges in support of this campaign effort. The next two years would primarily be the external campaign. And as Tao will be sharing, you know, with, with you as she, as it relates to the, the proposed budget, you can see where this is where most of the funding would come from the private sector in the years twenty-two-three and twenty-two-four. So there will be twenty-four months of, of active solicitation, if you will. The last three months will be, would be a very public campaign effort. Maybe it's a BRICS campaign. There'd be different ways, but we'll want everybody to have an opportunity to be involved. All their gifts are going to be important. Twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, all are important, all are meaningful, all will make a difference. But if you looked at that, that table of investment, though there will be many, many, indeed, probably a, a couple hundred, that might result in a hundred thousand dollars. So we don't start there. The campaign is phased, but we don't start there because the proposed campaign that's being suggested here based upon the, the bids and those things would be a seven-point-five million dollar public-private partnership in terms of the monies that would be required to restore and to renovate the H Barn complex. So that gives you a sense of kind of initiate the campaign. I mentioned the setting the campaign goal. We tested seven million. It looks like seven-point-five million dollars would, I know this was important to the city manager. He wants to know what all those costs would be, you know, from the beginning to the end. Let's not be surprised when we get to the end. So we've really looked at those things closely, looked at, talking, talking with our architects, talking, getting some updated figures from the construction cost as well. Implement the awareness activities, as I mentioned. We'll prepare a compelling case for support, though that was a good document, as you may recall. It was a preliminary case for support. We know more now, having visited with so many prospective donors who gave us great information. Based upon what they told us. we will be able to create a compelling case for support that will touch both the head and the heart as it relates to um this project. It'll be data-driven, it'll be collaborative, it'll be market-driven. It clearly will express the distinctive benefits that the H Bar, H Barn project um would bring to the city of Lakewood. And of course, it would detail the rationale for the required funding. There were a number of of other questions that interviewees had. Some of those we have been um hashing over as we've had um some strategic conversations, and that is to decide in this part, and this is the the city council's decision to declare whether or not this is in fact a public works project. Partners for Parks can be the the face to the private sector, and I believe, based upon my experience, having done a great many um um successful capital campaigns, that they would have the ability to be able to orchestrate um this effort if they can build their organizational capacity. But it's a public-private, but it's a public works project, so that's why the city council's decision in part is all-important. And whether or not the city would be willing to invest in the capacity of Partners for Parks so that they could enlist the leadership and raise the dollars, literally the millions of dollars in support of this project from the private sector. So I feel like I've talked a lot here, um and I'd really love to address any questions um that the group may have. Um and again, thank you very, very much for this opportunity to um present here with you this evening.
Thanks, Al. I think we've got maybe it's appropriate to open up for questions before we turn to Talk Rouse, because I know she's going to present a bit of a pro forma budget for us. Do you wanna wait, council members, or do you have any questions for uh Al at this point? We can wait till the end. Looks like we can wait till the end. So Todd, it's uh you're up.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Wayland and council members. The financial information can be found on page forty-nine of your council packet. And as Mr. Hove had mentioned, the dollar amount is about seven point five million, it's seven million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the cost to do this barn. And the funding sources, we've broken it out between the portion that is the responsibility of Partners for Parks and the city. So of the seven million four hundred and thirty thousand that is needed, three million five hundred thousand would come from the capital campaign. And then another million coming from potential grants, and this could be the tr- the trust for historic preservation or the Pierce County lodging tax, for example. We have a four, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of other funding that is needed and yet to be determined. We have two hundred and fifty thousand from the state capital budget for which the city would apply. The city would also provide two, one hundred and fifty thousand for the startup for Partners for Parks and then look at uh applying for a lodging tax grant to secure two million dollars for the capital projects. And this would be for um kind of like what we did for the McGavick Center. So the McGavick Center debt service will be done in twenty twenty-seven. We would look for funding for lo- lodging tax in twenty twenty-five. So for two million dollars, that lodging tax um would provide for the capital, the annual debt service payments are estimated at a hundred and sixty thousand um with the twenty-year bond. On the uses side, the Partners for Parks would uh their portion would be um for the non-construction portion. So the cost for Partners for Parks would be five hundred and fifty thousand, and that includes the director or the staffing for that and the consultant contract. And the city of Lakewood, once the monies are raised um by Partners for Parks, would take over on the construction and the permitting process and such. And that cost is about almost six point nine million dollars. So that is the quick breakdown of the sources and uses schedule for the H Barn restoration. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Very good. So now it looks as if we can open up some questions unless Mr. Betts has some final remarks for us. Dave, did you have anything further? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Don for some questions.
Though I uh I think Al did an excellent job of presenting the the plan or the feasibility study, and I think that uh I'm sorry.
That's okay. Great. Mr. Anderson has some questions. Go ahead, Don.
Actually, this one's for Todd. Todd, what's the carryover balance, for lack of a better term? Unu- un- un-dedicated fund balance of the lodging tax fund?
Caught me off guard, but I'm gonna say it's about one point eight million dollars off memory.
I remembered it was, I remember it was seven figures. So it would be, if the council so choose, chose, it could block off uh all or part of that and only use some of the newer uh layer accrued funds for lodging tax allocations and set this set some of that aside for this is a major project. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The city council can use all of the funding for capital projects, and this would be an eligible project, um or it could just use the three percent that is restricted.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate uh your presentation, Mr. Hove and Ms. Kraus. I had a couple of questions regarding the 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 spreadsheet on the on the on the on the cost of the contract. And to follow up on Mr. Anderson's question with the footnote of doing a twenty-year uh bond issue that the spreadsheet doesn't reflect the cost to the city of an additional one point two million in interest payments that would go in, be a part of the debt service that would be necessary for lodging tax to create the two million dollars. So am I, uh I guess that isn't thought of as a cost of the project, but it's real money that the city would have to spend under this uh concept? Is that uh is that accurately describing wh- what would happen?
So the two million dollars is a direct uh contribution to the project. The debt service payment, if you take a look at it in terms of the bond issues that we have done for the capital projects for transportation, the proceeds that we the the bond proceeds go directly to pay for the project cost. We account for the debt service in a different fund. So that's similar to the lodging tax and the Partners for Parks. Uh this H Barn complex. So the H Barn complex in this schedule is showing what the construction cost and the entire cost of the project, but it wouldn't account for the debt service. So similar to transportation, we account for the project cost in the transportation fund, but we account for the debt service in the debt service fund. Here, the H Barn would be accounted for in the capital projects for parks. Uh and then the debt service would be accounted for in the lodging tax fund. So two separate funds, but the the true construction cost is only accounted for here. The other portion of it is debt service.
But but the debt service dollars would be lodging tax revenue dollars.
Yes.
So the lodging tax cost under this process to to be able to upfront provide the two million to do the project in the next four years. Uh that the long-term lodging tax cost would be three point two million if the estimate of a hundred and sixty thousand a year for twenty years is correct.
It it's a matter of accounting. So here on this spreadsheet, we're accounting for the project cost itself. In the lodging tax, we, that would be a different accounting of it. So the availability of funds, just like we do for the McGavick Center. So let's say that on an annual basis, the lodging tax is estimated to bring in a million dollars. We automatically back out the commitment that was made for the McGavick Center, and the rest of it is what is remaining. So it's really just a matter of accounting and how it's presented. Here, we're just focusing on the H Barn itself.
Good. But in reference to Mr. Anderson's question, you know, when we did the McGavick Center, there were not large balances of uncommitted capital restricted dollars in the lodging tax account, whereas now we have perhaps two-thirds of that two million is is there available as cash, and probably we could get to two million if we look at the next three lodging tax cycles uh and look to use the money that is designed to, we'll go and restricted to use for capital. And in the long term, we would save quite a bit on debt services. If if we were to choose that option, and is there any impediment to choosing that option?
I I I see where you're uh what you're saying now. So yes, the amount that is available in the lodging tax fund, the city, this is just a a estimate or a pro forma. So one option was to issue bonds of two million dollars and then pay that debt service. But if the lodging tax fund had enough money and there is a uh a request by the city to do that, to request the full amount, it would be up to the lodging tax committee based on some presentation um to determine how they want to allocate those dollars. Then they would take it to the city council to make a determination of how uh this, how the city council would either adopt what was recommended or not. So yeah, the two million dollars is just an example, but if the lodging tax had funds available and the lodging tax committee made a recommendation and the city council approved it, that two million dollars could definitely be less. It could be a million dollars, it could be five hundred thousand, which then would reduce the debt service payments and interest.
Okay. And then on the spreadsheet, it shows that over two years, the Partners for Parks would raise the three point five million that was their uh goal um in uh twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Exactly, but it especially doesn't show when those dollars would move from Partners for Parks to the city because in the expenditures, Partners for Park isn't going to spend all of those. The city's going to spend some of that money, so and would that move quarter by quarter as it is raised? Or would it be wait, we wait until, is there a date when there would be a transfer of the privately raised dollars to the city to cover this, what's listed as city expenses?
So those are the the, I guess, the um I I don't have like the exact timing, but the bottom line is the city will not start the construction until the funds are raised. So however that times, you know, so if we end up getting the one million seven hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, then the schedule would work. If we got it earlier, um let's just say they were very aggressive or people just wanted to get this going, it's possible for the city to start it sooner. If the funds don't come in, that would also delay when the project cost would occur for construction.
Okay, uh Mr. Hove, in one of your um one of your questions, and I get to think which one, there was a discussion that donors might be given the option of extending their donation and paying it over three to five years, which would be in conflict with what's on this Kraus's spreadsheet of everything being raised by the end of twenty twenty-four. That the, what percentage of the three point five billion do you think would end up not having to wait beyond twenty twenty-four to be collected through that uh extended donation period?
No, it's a great question, um Councilman Brandstetter. I think it has always been understood since the inception that if we were to maximize the level of support for major gift donors, that they would have a pledge period of three to five years. One of the details that came through the, as it relates to the findings and conclusions, as it spoke to the partnership aspect of this project, would be the ability of the city to literally cash flow the project until those dollars came in. If one was to wait until, say, five years, when all the pledge payments came in, then of course that could delay the project, and a construction cost could also be higher. What has been common in my, in is that because all the pre- pledge commitments will be signed commitments, oftentimes organizations take those to the banks, or they could take them other places because there's a very small default rate on those. But to your question, your specific question as to how much of the three point five million dollars would come in during fiscal years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, that is difficult to say for sure because it's left to the generosity of the men and women who are the donors as to how they could maximize their gift. If, for instance, someone is asked for a gift and they have the ability to make a gift of twenty thousand dollars, and we need the money right now, they can make a gift of twenty thousand dollars. However, if they could make that pledge over five years, and this is what my experience has been, many will choose to make a commitment of a hundred thousand dollars, knowing that they've got that extended period of time. Each of those are individual conversations. Each of those are individual proposals. Um and in that sense, it's very different than a grant application. It's a very much a one-on-one conversation that will take place with the particular donors. So hopefully that's helpful, um but it doesn't answer your question.
Well, it 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 suggests to me that there is a uh some discussion that has to go on, you know, Ms. Kraus indicated that the city's position would be to not start any construction until we had all the money and um your discussion of your assessment is, to the extent that the money was pledged, that the city may have resources to cash flow starting construction earlier in reliance upon pledges coming in in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So I think that that's, that is a so- something that should be, the partnership should discuss to make sure that we, we know which of those rules we're going to follow uh to be able to go and do that. Because I think there is also not really addressed by either of you, but the the issue of if the private campaign goes poorly, okay, and you know, what is sort of the criteria to decide, well, this isn't going to work on a reasonable timeframe and we've and recognize that we we've got some sunk costs, but we're not going to get there. Sort of having some criteria about how to make that kind of a decision that hopefully we never have to make would be an important discussion to also have. And 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 let let me just say that I I I'm I'm actually fairly confident that on the lower end of the scale, there are a lot of donations in the five hundred dollar or range that are going to that that will that will that will be presented by folks in the community. I think the question that you asked that got that mixed result about the one third thinking this was the real value of the project or the and another third thought of different saw a different value in it is a top thing and another one there, you know, I I myself sort of fall into the preservation piece. I see the the H barn is something. It's not going to stay the way it is. It's either going to fall down or we got to fix it and restore it. So I that's that's where I'm, you know, that's what part of the choir I I I I sing from. I I think you know, there are ways to go through and do that. And did the assessment either in the spreadsheet that looked at construction in twenty twenty-five? Or any of the other in determining the seven and a half million dollar goal? Is that seven and a half million dollars in twenty twenty-five dollars? Or is it in giving away inflation is going? Was that seven and a half million dollars in twenty twenty-two dollars?
It would be in twenty twenty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll start with the the spreadsheet then on on page forty-nine. There's a trust for historic preservation. I'm not I'm not familiar with that. Could someone tell me what that is?
I'm not familiar with that one, so I would have to defer to either Mary or Park, probably Mary on that one.
Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. There's several different to the it's through the state process at the state grants, and they have a couple of different programs. One is specifically for renovation of barns. They also have grant programs for renovation of storage structures. And so we would take a look at all of those different opportunities as we always do to find the various resources that would match this project. And and then, you know, find out what the best the best ways to go about being competitive in those processes. And because of course it meets criteria, has to meet the criteria, et cetera. There's some grants out there that say if you're going to restore a barn for the purpose of a barn, you know, which this wouldn't work because we're looking at it not just for storage, but for for different kinds of things. Right now, the barns are just for storage because that they meet that kind of a code. So we would do all of the research we needed to find the right programs. But that's just an example of one of the several grants out there that could work.
Okay, so so that that line item includes as as hopefully a state grant out of that barn preservation, renovation. They've got some capital fund. So that would be as early as would we ask for that as early as next year or we'd wait two more years?
I think we would have to lay out the timing for the grants. They vary. Some are two years, two-year grants, one or one-year grants. So we would take a look at all of those opportunities and see how it fits within the the schedule. Because even the state grants, if we were to start applying from, say, in April of this year, typically they're not ready until the following legislative session or something like that. So they're all different. And and that's actually fairly new one for us being an indoor structure. So we would do more research on that to find out the timing and what we would need to do to prepare for that.
So and the next question is for Mr. Ho. The next group of people you're going to talk to. So you mentioned you met met with thirty-four people, gave us the list. Who are you looking for in this next group of a hundred?
So I think we would be looking for people who are affluent as well as influential. I've, Councilman, I've been in in this work, major gifts for over forty years. Every campaign has been successful. I'm very aware of of the levels of support in Tacoma, having worked with many different organizations, different campaigns. So what we would do is we would identify people who might have an interest in any of these three areas. One, they they love Lakewood. You know, or they care about, you know, iconic buildings, preservation. They maybe they're interested in a multi-use facility. But have the ability, the capacity and are somehow connected to Lakewood to do this. I have little doubt at all. In fact, it could significantly be more than the three and a half million dollars that's been identified in the private sector that this project could be successful. The biggest challenge is that we have enough runway to do the project. And that's why the cash flowing, that is the partnership with the city, makes all the difference for being able to proceed. That's why the feasibility study was in fact done. We didn't go from an enthusiastic point of view that people love Lakewood. So of course, they would support the project. In fact, we had a level and a deep conversation. What was interesting about the way Partners for Parks is constituted is they have representatives from the rotaries and from the Lakewood Foundation and from the the various fraternal organizations. So they already have a network of folks that they talk to. But specifically, Councilman, to your question, we would identify those persons. Most of my questions as it related to that gift chart was talking about those who had the potential to make a gift or a pledge of a hundred thousand dollars or more. We know that other level of gifts will come in. It's at that level that will be absolutely critical because there's probably going to be twelve persons or foundations that are going to represent half of our campaign goal or project goal. And so we'll want to identify them on the front side. We'll want to enlist them in terms of leadership. So that they can go ahead and not only look at making a significant contribution themselves, but be able to reach out to some of their friends. And essentially, though you could there's there's thousands of books on fundraising. It boils down to this, Councilman. Someone who's a peer who's made a commitment says, you know, I love this project. I support this project. Will you join me? Of course, we will, you know, you know, have written proposals and we'll have a number of different things, but that's really what it boils down to. I think everyone on the council knows that there are people in Tacoma and in the Lakewood area who have the capacity to make significant gifts for things that are worthy projects. The feasibility study, what came through loud and clear there that this is considered a very worthy project. And so if that's the case, then I believe in the funding will be there if there's enough runway and Partners for Parks is able to create the capacity to do what they can do well, and that is to reach out into the community as the private face for the city of Lakewood.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? I I have a couple just kind of following up on that. Mr. Hope, on on the runway discussion there and given what Mr. Branstadter noted was a potential savings on the interest carry. If hypothetically, the city were to front a chunk of the proposed contribution by way of the lodging tax funding sooner than later. Not only would that be a decent runway forward, but wouldn't it also potentially get us going with some construction activity? Even though we may not have all of the pledge money in the bag, at least we might have a good portion of it. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because this isn't really a kind of ground up construction project. This is a renovation project, historic renovation, which could be done in phases as most renovation projects are. So is there some viability there in doing, you know, kind of pay as we go with a project like this, depending, of course, upon the mobilization cost of a general contractor, that kind of thing? But this really is a renovation project, which happens in stages as opposed to ground up from a new foundation.
Mr. Mayor, there may be others much more able than myself to respond to that particular question. But yes, there would be benefit in terms of construction cost savings, as an example, that would accrue to that. But I can't speak for the council or for the city manager as to the the value of that. But it's not uncommon in the private sector. My experience has been that normally, take take a college, for instance. Whether it's Tacoma Community College, University of Washington, Pacific Lutheran University, it wouldn't make any difference, any nonprofit. There has to be some way to be able to cash flow the project going forward. Almost a hundred percent of the time, the organization itself doesn't have all of the funding or they would just fund the project. They wouldn't reach out, you know, to the community to engage. So that was, I think, the appeal, the greatest appeal, especially given that the project itself is owned by the city of Lakewood. And there was a feeling like, well, there would be a less taxes if this were something that the city might partner with in terms of the private sector in in helping to support. If indeed, this was a project that made a lot of sense. So I think that there are strengths and weaknesses, both to the public side and to the private side. What is exciting is what the study said and what and it was very data-based and data-driven was that together, the strengths of one assisted the weakness of the other. And similarly, the weaknesses of one can be strengthened by the partnership of the other. A project such as this, every month, as so we won't be surprised towards the end like, wow, this isn't working out, this project. Every single month, the task force that would be in that would be put together would be measuring progress against the plan of campaign. So every month, we're going to see, are we enlisting more and more people? And furtherance of this particular project, are more and more people making commitments to the campaign? Are they coming in at the level and the number that we need for the table of investments? This would be something that would be measured and monitored and moved forward right away. And that's why the first nine months is important in terms of putting together the the actual plan of campaign.
Do you think that, you know, if the goal is from the city standpoint to lock in our risks, so to speak, and make sure that the three and a half is raised sooner than later? You know, you've indicated pretty affirmatively that you're confident that these monies can be raised, given who you know, what you know, and viability to study. Can you get this raised in a year after the the quiet phase? So say eighteen months?
Never say never, Mr. Mayor, but I most campaigns, as you know, I mean, we've got over two hundred years of experience with campaigns in the United States. We're the most generous nation in the world. We've got a lot of demographics that say how long these things take. It normally takes a minimum of two and a half to three years to do a campaign of three to ten million dollars. That's kind of what the time it takes. So you want to allow, it's it's not a transaction. It really is a very meaningful commitment. Because oftentimes, major gifts are some, if not the largest commitment that they've ever made shows up there. So I had like one individual, for instance, he's given a million dollars to youth as it relates to the YMCA. And his question to me was, Ally says, you know, I could contribute fifty thousand dollars to this project. But he says, it doesn't strike my heart like it does for kids. You're not doing this for kids. So that's just one person. But when we talk about a compelling case for support and who's talking to that, what I know is here's somebody who's been a longtime Lakewood resident. Here's somebody who's made a commitment of a million dollars towards another organization. And so if he was suitably cultivated and engaged and enlisted and involved in this project, I would be surprised if if although fifty thousand dollars is an amazing gift, that that person would not make a sign a gift significantly greater. That's another advantage of moving beyond the transaction and seeing that it's about the relationship and cultivating that relationship. Because afterwards, you want them to continue to support as they have Partners for Parks. And they have that. That is, Partners for Parks has the ability through this organizational development that they will do is to really put themselves on firm footing to fundraise in the future. So it's more than just the campaign. It is a combination of campaign readiness, but also organizational development. That too will take some campaign to do it or take some time to do that in in the most prudent way. And great question. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. You you mentioned the the Public Works Project identity of this. I mean, truly, whether it's public-private partnership or whatever, it is a public works project for purposes of prevailing wage and L and I and all that, right? So just to work clear on that, because it is. Final question, maybe to Mary. I know we're not quite ripe yet for post-construction discussions, but at some point, we probably will be interested in seeing something by way of ongoing operations and maintenance costs, because there's going to have to be some sort of plan in place. Because this will be a budget item, I'm sure, that you'll come back and and ask us for in a biennial budget some year after this is built.
Yeah, we'll be doing a business plan type document to take a look at the operational costs, opportunities for a facility of this nature and be providing that to council long before we ask for operational dollars. So we're sure that council knows all of the all of the pieces to this puzzle.
Very good. Any further questions? Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, our recommendation, again, this is before I make that statement, this is a you know, obviously, a multi-year project. And to kick it off, you know, our recommendation at the city level is to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in seed monies for Partners for Parks to initiate their capital campaign process. And that will be coming forward to the council as part of your carry forward budget requests. So that's kind of the next, that would be the next step in this as it relates to a policy decision for 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 this body. Because what you have this evening is a is an outcome of the funding that you provided to Partners for Parks as a joint effort to create this report, this feasibility study.
Got it. What would the one fifty bias, John, just in in simple terms, kind of the structure for the campaign and and a little bit better collateral so we can figure out what flesh is on the bone here?
So as Ms. Kraus has outlined, and again, this comes from Partners for Parks, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be seed money in two thousand twenty-two to allow them to hire some kind of a campaign position as well as a firm to actually undertake the capital, the capital campaign.
Got it. Okay.
And then that would be and then that would be essentially a sunk cost for the city into this into this project as well. We we have not framed it that it would be something that would be reimbursed to the city in any shape, form, or manner. So it would be part of the total cost and the city's contribution. Because the city's contribution on this, I'm going to round up seven and a half million dollars is four million. And then Partners for Parks is pledging three and a half million.
Got it. Mr. Anderson?
So at the same time, I hope we could discuss adopting a policy to block off the reserve capital portion of the lodging tax fund to show the city's commitment. I think that would be powerful in the message it made to the community that although we can't allocate that without going through the committee and but just saying, hey, we're we're as a matter of policy, we're not going to spend that money now because we think this would be a good use for it.
So Councilman Anderson, if that's the the direction of this body, I would recommend that we do that as part of the carry forward budget process later this spring as well. So so Mayor, I would ask for maybe some consensus there if you wanted to come back at a different meeting.
I think we could probably gain the consensus, but it might be good to have a bit on the study sessions. We can get our hands around the actual lodging tax monies available. I think Ms. Kraus indicated we've got about a million eight.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Kraus was right. It's one point eight four five million. That's projected at the end of of uh two thousand twenty-one. And uh
And that's not subject to lingering reimbursables?
No, that's what she's got projected. And so that will most likely grow to two plus million by the end of two thousand twenty-two, and Ms. Kraus can will probably have that number as part of the budget carry floor process.
Okay. What's the uh consensus? We need two two thumbs up. One on moving forward with the initial city contribution of a hundred and fifty to kick this off and two, following Mr. Anderson's thought, whether we weight the city's participation contribution by discussing a set aside of lodging tax for capital purposes. Those are kind of the items on the table. We got two thumbs up from Mr. Brandstetter and Councilmember Moss, one and a half for Councilmember Bell.
Yeah, I I think um, you know, so far the revenue on that, and I don't know how we ended. I'm looking at the third quarter report and the LTAC was almost at what we had budgeted for the year at the end of the third quarter. So the million eight forty-five, we we certainly set aside a portion of that. And then going forward, I think we should recommend to the committee um that we keep some additional monies aside. Because I think the LTAC now has really come on strong now. We've got we had another hotel come online and there and and hopefully, once this COVID thing is kicked, we should see some pretty significant revenues. And I think that that would be that this is just kind of tailor made for this type of LTAC and and this and this project are both tailor made for each other.
I I agree, provided it really does have the multi-use functionality that we all hope it does, right? And we don't have any sort of uh elevation drawings, interior, much exterior to work with. So we're kind of putting a lot of trust that it's going to have that functionality. Uh and none of us have even been inside that darn thing. So someday it might be kind of nice to have a mayor where just to see what it looks like in its present sort of dilapidated condition.
Now, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I have been inside and you haven't missed anything.
Yeah. Probably not. It would be interesting to get a sense of the volume inside there because you wonder if, you know, what kind of utility it has with stalls, but hopefully great utility, right? What do you think, Mr. Betts? Is it kind of cool on the inside? Will it be cool?
It's, you know, it's uh, we have to work within the parameters. It's a designated historic site, so you can't would have put laminated beams or anything in it. There's there's parameters around that which James Guerrero went went over with us. Uh so you're not missing anything. It's a barn.
It's a seven million dollar barn, but yeah, I get it. And secretary, it's not birthing, uh, you know, new foals in there either, so.
But uh sometimes I think it was a it was a dairy barn.
Right.
Yeah.
Got it. Sally, you had a a thought or comment? Once you gotta get yourself off mute there.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, sorry, takes me a minute. Um, yeah, because we had architectural drawings done. I don't know if you've all seen them or not. I thought they were given out at one time of if you looked at it now and then you looked at what the architect said was the possibility, and it was done within the the limits of it being a, you know, a historic
Right.
process. It's it's really phenomenal.
Good.
Where it can go to. So that would be, that would be a good thing to do.
Maybe we could get another copy of that back. I think Mr. Guerrero provided those some time ago. Might be
Okay, we'll we'll see if we can get some to you, okay? Because I think that might help you.
That would be great.
Okay.
Anything else? Anyone? Hallie?
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for all your hard work. This has been a labor of love, I know, for many years. And I think all of us here, including all of you, we want to see this done sooner than later. So the sooner we can get this campaign kicked off the ground and we can raise some some great funds, you know, we're I I sense from the council that we're ready to go and be partners with you and make it happen.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to to present and also the support means a lot to us.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Well, if there's not anything else, I'll let you guys go back to your evenings. We still have a a few more hours to go here. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All of you involved, it's it's a great project. Okay. So next, from the hopeful, we turn to Mr. Buer. Oh, actually, we turn to planning manager Tiffany Spear for a review of the Buildable Lands Report, which is also hopeful in our twenty forty-four growth targets.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, Deputy Mayor Moss. Um, just very quickly to reorient you, since you've been talking about something that's really different from this topic. Uh land use planning now from the state level on down deals with planning horizons of generally twenty or thirty years. And we are in the process right now as a region of taking a look at what were quote assigned twenty thirty population and employment targets for jurisdictions, including Lakewood, and updating those and moving the horizon out to twenty forty-four. And so there's a couple of interrelated uh documents I'm going to bring to you uh tonight, and it's really just a status report. We're not at the point of any sort of action, but we will be within the next couple of months, I believe. Um and so for those of you that are involved with the Pierce County Regional Council, with Puget Sound Regional Council, um this is just something to have in the back of your mind. And then as we move closer to action time, we'll probably bring some additional information to the council. So um as I mentioned, we're talking about two different things. One is the twenty twenty-one Buildable Lands Report. This was presented, I believe, to you uh last fall. I can't remember the exact date, but just a reminder, this is a document that gets done every so far, it's been between five and ten year intervals, just based on funding and other realities. But the Pierce County Buildable Lands Report was last published last September. And at that point, it was looking at housing and employment capacity within the city of Lakewood um against the draft twenty forty-four housing and employment targets. And so what you see here is that uh the city as of that point had a housing capacity of a little over eleven thousand units. The draft needed at the time was almost seven thousand, so there was a little over four thousand quote excess capacity. And then in terms of jobs, um the draft need was the ten thousand plus. There was already that and more. So there was again, a little surplus of employment capacity for the draft target for the city. This is, as I mentioned, draft. There will be um the process I'm about to talk about to finalize the new targets for Lakewood uh through now to twenty twenty, or sorry, twenty forty-four. And so the difference or the ultimate conclusion, whether Lakewood has um so many units in excess of what they need to plan for um stands based on those finalized targets. We'll get to know that within the next couple of months. So twenty forty-four is the new land planning horizon for Puget Sound Regional Council on down to the city of Lakewood. Um if you'll recall, city of Lakewood is considered a quote a core city, which is just based on the population within Pierce County. It is Lakewood, University Place, Puyallup, and Auburn. And according to PSRC through the last iteration of the multi-county planning policies, those four cities together in Pierce County are supposed to, in quotes, be planning for sixty thousand nine hundred people between now and twenty forty-four. What has happened since Vision twenty fifty was completed is the jurisdictions within Pierce County have started talking amongst themselves about um how those population numbers might be divvied up among the various core cities. And so you see down here on the bottom, these four numbers are the ones that have been um requested or or negotiated with the cities and are moving forward as the draft numbers that Pierce County will be considering shortly. With for Lakewood, it is a number of sixteen thousand six hundred sixty-two that moves forward to a twenty forty-four population for Lakewood of eighty thousand two seventy-four. If you couple that with the Puyallup, U P, and Auburn numbers, you'll see that it is about twenty thousand less in total than what Vision twenty fifty calls for in the core cities. So um again, this is something that the city of Lakewood and Pierce County have arrived at, along with these other core cities as a potential, but uh the discussion is not yet finished. Similar discussion here regarding housing units. It's basically roughly, excuse me, two and a half people per household. So this eighty thousand two seventy-four number comes down and is thirty-three nine hundred and eighty-two units by twenty forty-four. And then when you look at employment, it's a similar conversation. So all of the core cities together under Vision twenty fifty were were shown as um bringing in a share of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five jobs. The way the negotiations at the local level have gone, right now, the draft number is twenty-seven five twenty-one. So again, this is lower than the Vision twenty fifty numbers, but more discussion is happening shortly. As you're also aware, um this map and the reasoning behind it was provided to Pierce County and Puget Sound Regional Council has seen it as well. That talks about um coupled with the the letter that went along with it, why there are a number of areas within the city that really aren't open for densification and future growth. So whether it is um utility services, uh the lack of vacant land, the current uses on properties and or critical areas or geological issues limiting uh capacity, the fact that over here on the eastern side of the city areas are immediately adjacent to or within air corridor um or air accident potential zones and also the for um sorry, McCord Air Force Base itself limits the availability for land there for any type of use, but certainly lower density than what it is now. And then the number of public institutional uses, this all concluded that about fifty-two percent of the buildable land within the city is is really um not available for additional densification over time, whether it be for residential or commercial growth. So having said that, Lakewood requested a number of seventy-six thousand plus. There was some conversation based on the twenty twenty census results where we're now at a point of saying eighty thousand two hundred and seventy-four would be the number in Lakewood for twenty forty-four. And again, that is less than what would be under the Vision twenty fifty number. So there's still the discussion to be had. Whether that eighty thousand number is achievable is a second question. And um taking a look at what the city council has adopted in terms of growth for the downtown and also for the Lakewood Station area for both people and jobs. The answer, we would think, is yes, if the uh development does happen at the highest end of the densities that are allowed under current zoning. But in addition to that, there would need to be, what you see here, eleven additional units per year for twenty-five plus people per year outside of those subareas um would get us to that eighty thousand two seventy-four number by the year twenty forty-four. So when this comes forward to the Pierce County Regional Council and then on to the Pierce County Council and ultimately to Pierce, sorry, Puget Sound Regional Council, that would be the philosophy, the thought process behind Lakewood's position, that there are limitations on where growth can happen in the city that the city, in some cases, doesn't have any control over. Coupled with, there is this higher uh planned growth in two of the subareas of the city. This is the number that the city and the county feel is uh achievable, and this is how we think we can get there. So one more time, this does not meet the number that's envisioned twenty fifty at this point, but uh given the way that other jurisdictions, I believe Everett was one of them, and others in the past have communicated with Pierce, sorry, Puget Sound Regional Council, talking about why the number that is proposed is achievable and where we see um the uh uh ability to reach a number is how we're going to be able to move forward ultimately to certification by uh PSRC for this growth number. So all of that gobbledygook to say, there's been a target set for population and growth at the regional level. At the local level, the county and the city are talking about a different number, which is less. And as we move forward into the political uh elected leader discussion about these numbers, um it will be a process of explaining to other jurisdictions why Lakewood is holding the position it's holding. So with that, I will stop sharing and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Any questions? Very detailed. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, thank you. Uh thank, thank you for the uh presentation and explaining what the crystal wall is trying to see. Um, I just had a question about uh of the four core cities. You know, Auburn has the uniqueness of being partially in King County and partially in Pierce County. But it does look like the growth that described from Pierce County, just if we look at their percentage of the population that is in Pierce County, it would seem that they should probably then grow that population similar to the other cities to somewhere around twenty-five hundred as opposed to two sixty-three. Is is that really made up in the King County side?
Um, yes, I don't have all the details in in Auburn's reasoning, but if I'm remembering correctly, much let me start over. All of the zoning within uh Pierce County for the city of Auburn is residential. Um but they have several large residential developments planned in the King County part of their city. So there's very little growth planned within uh Pierce County's portion of Auburn. So they've got reasons why they're saying in Pierce County, it's only going to be this much because we're actually going to grow quite a bit more on both the employment and housing side in King County.
So would they listen to more closely than we were in saying we got places that we don't plan to have any growth? Where we've been trying to make that case for like our air corridors and things?
Um, I I don't think that's the case. And as this moves forward into the PCRC level, um it's going to be, you know, because you're which jurisdictions are hearing what Lakewood's message has been. You have Lakewood being the second largest city in the county. So out of the core cities, it is the biggest one. And it has a regional growth center, which is the same boundaries as the downtown. So there is an expectation that Lakewood is going to go correct, grow quite a bit. Um in the process over the last year of talking to Pierce County about this, they have been very open and receptive to Lakewood's reasoning. Um not to say that's going to be bought into a hundred percent when it gets to PCRC, but we have not received um uh a pushback, if you will, from the other core cities or Pierce County about the number that we're talking about for Lakewood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any anything else, Mr. Brandstetter? Are you good on that? Anyone else? Well, very good. Well, thank you for the update. I know Mr. Boeck and I will be uh up to speed when we get to PCRC and we have to, you know, wrangle over our allocation. So we'll be well armed and well advised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I think we have Mr. Buer up to talk to us a little bit about our multifamily tax exemption changes. Mr. Buer, if you are ready, you're on deck.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen real fast. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my presentation
Before you start, can you go up to your display settings and swap the view for us, please?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Uh, this evening, I'm providing the city council a summary of some changes to the twenty twenty-one multifamily tax exemption program um that were approved by the uh state legislature in uh uh this past year. Uh, this is just an intro slide. Uh, my point here is also to explain to the city council that uh overall, I don't see these changes as having an immediate impact on the city or the development community. Overall, I don't see these changes as having an immediate impact on the city or the development community. I do believe that as in past years, most developers will take advantage of the current eight year and twelve year programs. Uh, again, they passed this legislation effective July twenty five, twenty twenty one. We were proposing to submit this to the council for. Review and approval this fall, but we got stuck with some issues with tree preservation, which took precedence over this particular item. So it's now moved forward into the spring of twenty twenty two. Uh, the intended goals of the legislature was to incentivize multifamily housing. Increase densities, increase production of market rate workforce housing. Develop permanently affordable housing opportunities, promote economic investment and attempt to create family wage jobs. Very briefly, what is the multifamily tax exemption program? It encourages basically up to four, a minimum of four new multifamily units using the downtown of the Lakewood District subareas. And a portion of the Springbrook neighborhood. Currently, properties. Uh, it exempts property taxes for eight to twelve years on the assessed improvements that that create four or more units. Letter twelve option requires at least twenty percent affordable units. When does the exemption take place? It takes place upon city council approval, which actually takes several forums. I mentioned conditional certificate of acceptance, but there's also a final certificate. And a contract that is approved by city staff once the conditional certificate has been approved. Owner enters into a contract establishing specific guidelines for completion. If the owner sells the property after the tax exemption has been granted. The exemption stays with the property and is transferred to the new owner. In Lakewood, we have three general areas of what we call RTAs. Uh, residential target areas, the CBD, which matches basically the. Uh, downtown, um, sub area plan, uh, the Lakewood Station RTA, which matches most. Of the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. And then we have a small section in Springbrook adjacent to Bridgeport Way. The changes, many, many of these changes really don't affect the city, but I thought I would just mention them briefly. Number one expands the definition to the city to include cities. Any city until December thirty first, twenty thirty one. And what you'll see with some of these changes, you have to kind of pick up on it, is that they're actually putting in sunset clauses throughout this document. And you have to sort of pay attention to that, but you'll see more of that as we go through. Number two basically allows smaller sized counties and cities to participate in multifamily tax exemption. Three, mincemeat definitions of low income, modern income, affordable housing. Deletes the term high cost area, which nobody could figure out. And then adds the term metropolitan statistical area MSA to each definition. And there's a brief explanation of that in the report. I won't go into a lot of details. But if you use the. MSA definition of median household income, the number goes up to closely to ninety four thousand dollars. Right now Lakewood's median household income is roughly fifty two thousand dollars. What that does by using the the different number, it expands the program to a higher number of applicants. Number four, change the definition of multifamily unit housing. To include, to include a group of four building, uh, buildings having four or more dwelling units rather than a single building. Having four or more dwelling units. And this, it just expands some opportunities that we maybe have not seen. Number five creates a new twenty year multifamily property tax exemption with two options. I won't go into the options in this presentation there, discuss the staff report. I don't think either one of them really apply to Lakewood. Uh, for a variety of reasons, and we can talk about that if the council desires to do so. Number six allows a city to not otherwise eligible to offer existing twelve year exemptions to offer it. For properties that commit to renting or selling at least twenty percent of the units to low and moderate households. Here, there is a requirement of either fifteen dwelling units per acre. It, or if you're over a population of twenty thousand twenty five dwelling units per acre. Seven provides a twelve year extension to the existing eight year and twelve year exemptions. That are within the eighteen months of expiring. Properties must commit to rent or sell at least twenty, at least or sell at least twenty percent of the units to low income households. Here we have seven existing MFTE programs in Lakewood. Two have expired out, three are currently active and two have yet to start construction. So there are potentially, imagine some projects that could be eligible for this if they desire to. Uh, provide for. Uh, a twenty percent set aside. Eight requires property owners to provide qualifying tenants for relocation assistance. That's new. Uh, nine authorizes a city or county to extend deadline for completion for additional five years. For any applications submitted on or before February fifteen, twenty twenty. When there are outstanding application requirements, we may very well see at least one application come forward with an extension request. The ability of, uh, kind of developers to obtain contractors right now is very, very difficult. Even the city is having problem with some of its programs, particularly in the home and CDBG front. I'm almost done. Uh, ten authorizes local jurisdictions to assign and collect administrative deed to cover oversight costs with a new twenty year exemption. And my question is, is can you also have a fee for projects that are in the eight and twelve year exemption cycle? And that's something that we are going to have a conversation with Department of Commerce. Eleven prohibits the approval of new exemptions beginning January one, twenty thirty two. And granting extensions beginning January one, twenty forty six. Here again is you're beginning to see sun setting of this program unless the legislation changes. Twelve changes the date cities and counties must report annually from December thirty first, April one. This is actually kind of a big deal. It's always difficult to get our reports in by December thirty first, so I'm glad they're moving into April first. Also requires a city or county to be in compliance with the reporting requirement. To offer certificates of tax exemption for this property tax exemption. Thirteen, this is something that we are monitoring very carefully. Requires the Department of Commerce to implement an audit program for multifamily tax properties. There is a committee that's been assigned to this. We have three Lakewood employees, including myself, that are a part of that committee. And we are attempting to help commerce set up this audit process. One of the concerns that I have is the type of covenant for affordable housing. What exactly will commerce require? And will there be a desire that it be uniform throughout all the cities? There are different covenants being used by different cities right now. It makes some sense. They all look the same. However, some are much more complex than others. A section of the report that I thought I would share with the council is with some of these ordinances. Cities actually go ahead and provide for unique requirements. They add stuff. Uh, to the ordinance itself. And so I I took some time to just pick out some cities that do this. Um, Bellingham requires historic protection provisions, Spokane. They have different requirements for parking. Shoreline, they do not have an eight year market rate housing exemption. It has to be adjacent to a light rail sub area and that there are limits on the maximum number of residential units within an existing sub area. As I recall, it's five hundred units. Tacoma, it must be in a residential target area but shall not become available. In neighborhood commercial nodes until design standards are updated. And requires a certain level of mixed use commercial development, at least thirty percent on the first floor. Uh, the next steps is to return to the planning commission and to include amended definitions, which. In the multifamily tax exemption program are actually found in title eighteen A, which is zoning code. Thus, it requires a public hearing and review by the planning commission and action by the city council. Multifamily tax exemption, the actual program is found in title three, but again, the definitions are found in title eighteen A. After the planning commission, we return to the city council, again with some recommended, recommended changes to the program. Uh, we would like to, number one, these will be recommendations by staff. Codify new state changes. Two, codify application procedures. Three, uh, require project proponents to enter into contract with the city. To abide by public nuisance codes and rental housing, uh, safety program. Four, restructure annual compliance procedures. Uh, that is being sought in in relationship to what we might be getting down the pipe from Department of Commerce. I'm in the Lakewood Station RTA to match the boundaries of Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. There's a couple of areas that have not been included. Uh, we are suggesting that those be added. One is some commercial, commercial areas. On east side of Bridgeport Way and then, uh, uh, Lakewood Landing. And lastly, this is not a part of the code amendment. But because this whole program is becoming more and more complex. We would like to update and create a new procedures manual for the multifamily tax exemption program. I think that will be easier for staff. It will be easier for us to do these annual reports. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my presentation. Um, I'll stop sharing my. My screen and return it to the council.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions of Mr. Buhr on this topic, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and thank you, David. I know any, anytime folks in Olympia change. A lot of terms and definitions and deadlines, uh. You know, it's, uh. It's a task to go in and 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 then write those in to yours. The one area that I am not certain that I. Am fully understanding the reason for or that whether it's a good idea. Is. Incorporating Lakewood Landing into the RTA, uh, in that area. And my concern there is, is that I. The, the, the discussions that we've been hearing about the progress in Lakewood Landing. Has indicated that there is. A good deal of interest, interest in, 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 in development activity there, particularly if the. Wash Dot facility can be successfully relocated, which is a separate matter. But, uh. Making that area eligible for multifamily tax exemptions. Seems to me to be somewhat at odds with the considerable effort that we spent. Trying to get a tax increment financing. Legislation approved. Oh, our thinking all along and even our rationale of the legislature where we were supporting it. Being that that was something that would help with us getting the infrastructure necessary to make. Lakewood Landing. Viable, uh, going soon and that. The tax increment financing. Program that was approved is based on appreciation of property tax in. Specific designated areas. And how we would actually use that in a situation of where we have granted. Major development in those areas, tax exemptions for twelve. Eight to twelve or maybe even twenty years. Those two seem at odds with each other in that we wouldn't get the tax, property tax appreciation. To be able to use tax increment financing for improvements there. So I, I guess I would really like that at least to be looked at and weighed. In the decisions by, in presentations to the planning commission and in their consideration as to. Whether to actually recommend putting Lakewood Landing. Into the RTA. Once there's some, some actual data to go on, and I think there's also. Things we don't know about the tax increment financing. Uh, legislation as well. Um, and but we can't please people be planning to use that as well as planning to grant tax exemptions, I don't think. Anyway. When this comes back, if you can have some thoughts around that. Would be appreciated.
Certainly, we can provide that, that kind of analysis as we move forward, uh, to the commission and council.
Thank you. Any further questions? Was there much consideration, Mr. Buhr, on the, the twenty year new? Property tax exemption? You made mention of it a bit in your materials on page six fifty five.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure it's going to work. I'll, I'll be honest with you. The two options that are available. One is a requirement that you have to have a population sixty five thousand. And the other piece is that you have to be adjacent to a high capacity transportation system. Which means the bus routes have to move at fifteen minute intervals. Nowhere in Lakewood do the buses move at fifteen minute intervals. As a result of this legislation, I've become kind of an expert on bus traffic in Lakewood. Uh, we're lucky if we get, uh, uh, transportation at thirty minute intervals because of operational issues right now. With Pierce Transit and COVID. Pierce Transit's not going to recover very quickly once the pandemic is over. So, um, that to me, option two just doesn't seem that realistic and frankly, I don't understand option one. Where it seems to say a nonprofit or local government would assure permanent affordable housing. Well, why would you be involved in a property tax exemption program if, if you're a government or you're some sort of nonprofit? I scratched my head on that one.
Got it. I was just.
I think that's more for a housing agency.
Yeah, I think so too. I was confused on the option two language because in the one sentence, it said the city must have a population no more than sixty five thou. Is it no more than or greater than? Because it was a little confusing with the comment there. It's not that it matters. We'll never.
Yeah.
See this option, but.
It just, it doesn't come available until it reached sixty five thousand.
Got it, got it. Okay. Very good. Well, we've only got, what, eight projects right now with the MFTE in Lakewood?
Yeah, so we're having, one will start construction very soon. Uh, but the other one I think is going to have severe problems trying to get contractors. This is becoming a real issue and. I'm going to hear about it more in the annual housing report, so, so stay tuned.
Got it. Okay, very good. Uh, if there are no further questions of Mr. Buhr on that particular item. In my little script here. I think that includes the items for review for tonight. You see the items tentatively scheduled for the February seven regular city council meeting. And with that, we'll turn now to Mr. Coffield for his reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. A few updates for you. Uh, these bodies where you appropriated funds, uh, last year for us to move forward with, um. Body worn cameras for our police officers. And last week, we came to an agreement with the. Police Guild to create a pilot program where about ten or sixteen police officers will. Um, essentially, uh, uh, test the body cameras as well as quote unquote. Test the new policies and procedures as it relates to the body worn cameras. And, uh, work out any issues or, um, challenges that we might face before we go live with everybody. Um, and then over a period of time, once we get through that, which we expect to take about two months. Um, once we get through that, then we will then incrementally bring on body cameras, um, for all of our police officers and our goal. You know, knock on wood, supply chain issues. Um, our goal is to, um, have all of the body cameras up and operational by the end of the year, if not. If not sooner. We closed on tactical tailor, uh, last Thursday afternoon and, uh. You know, there's a myriad of, of folks that really I want to thank here. Uh, of course, internal to our organization, uh, Bill Adamson. Our SSMCP program manager, Becky Newton, our, um, economic development manager. Um, our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, and a number of her staff, uh, Mr. Buhr and a number. Of, of, of his team. Um, I, I mean, the list, uh, quite frankly, goes on. Um, also, you know, outside the city, want to thank Pierce County. Um, their Department of Facilities, the Execs Office, uh, the County Council. Uh, for what they have done in, in making this, um, come to fruition, including bringing hard cold. For what they have done in, in making this come to fruition, including bringing hard cold cash to the table. Of course, the state of Washington, they too contributed mightily to this, to this project and want to recognize. Our, 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 our state legislators going, current ones, as well as going back a number of years for their. Previous and continued support there. The governor's office for which this also would not have come to fruition. Also, at the federal level, our federal delegation and, and, and working through. A number of paths there with the Air Force and with the Army and. Whether it was at Pentagon or environmental, Army Environmental Command. Just a lot of folks working on this to, to, to bring this, bring this to fruition. And of course, our very good friends at, at, at J B L M, both current leadership and past leadership. With a specific thank you to the previous chief of staff, Tom Knight, who was also. Again, very key in, in, in bringing this together and then his predecessor who has come on board. David Fulmer, who has helped close the deal, if you will. And then lastly, I want to thank Tactical Taylor and everybody associated with that, in particular their president and CEO, Casey Engels. Who, to say he was patient throughout this process would be a bit of an understatement because Tactical Taylor agreed to this. Over a year and a half ago. I mean, they signed a purchase and sale agreement at that point in time. And, you know, he was just phenomenal. And just a virtue of patience there. And so I had a nice conversation with him on, on, on Thursday. And he is now, he, he, we are now his landlord. For this, we are now, he is now leasing back the property from us. Though I did tell him if he had any property, problems with the buildings, if he could hold off a little bit before we could get some folks out there to address it, I would. I would, I would appreciate that. So. But again, just a tremendous effort by everybody involved. And of course, I want to thank the mayor and the council for your leadership in this because. I remember when I first came to the city, this, to say that this was a heavy lift to get something like this done. I mean, it just seemed impossible at the time. But again, because of our persistence, we have been able to get it done and now we're going to move on to the next major acquisitions or. Or two. So more to come to that probably later this year. The team. Would like a little bit of a, a, a respite here. Oh, actually, also want to recognize our legal team, our own city attorney, Hattie Wagner, as well as our outside legal. Team, Kenan Williams, they, they, they too instrumental in, in bringing this together. Matter of fact, I think without Kenan, I don't know where we would be. Because of, because of his, his, his work in this as well. So just want to thank him as well. But a great job all around. On March first, we're going to move forward with the new emergency management communication tool. It's called Code Red. Many of you might be familiar with this. This is something personally I've used in other jurisdictions. And it's. Essentially a way to provide, you know, the public emergency updates, but it can be used for other purposes as well. And so this is done in partnership with our emergency management collaborative team that we have with the fire district, with the town of Silicon and University Place. Though U P is actually already has it up and running. And so we're, we're going to get this going on March first. We got a pretty good deal on this. Because we also piggybacked on several other cities, including the city of Tacoma, to be able to launch, to, to, to launch this. So once it's up and running, you know, we'll be able to send out alerts to. To anyone in our, in our, in our community, as well as having people to, being able to sign up for specific. Issues and things along those lines, and then also being able to use internally. So it is a. It is a well-known product out there and I want to thank our assistant police chief. John Unford for his leadership and soon to be bringing this, bringing this on. Online and we'll be doing some community outreach on this as well in two thousand twenty-two to again. Get people to sign up and get engaged with, with this, with this tool. The, your tree advisory ad hoc committee. So you have received a total of thirty-nine applications, though three are duplicates, so you have thirty-six. And so the city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, is in the process of. Collating those for you and will load those onto your iPads. Also will work with your subcommittee, which is comprised of council members Farmer, Bokey and Anderson. To schedule some time to review those applications so they in turn can make a recommendation to the full body on who should be on this committee. And hopefully the council will be able, the, the subcommittee will be able to do that next week. And then make a recommendation to the full council as part of your next regular meeting, which is two weeks from now on Monday, February, February seventh. And then the committee would begin, be able to have its first meeting, actually about a week or two after that in, 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 in mid-February. Also, I wanted to report as a follow-up from last week on Waste Connections, the whole issue of the yard waste pickup credit. So a review of our franchise agreement, our, our legal team did take a look at it. And so, because Waste Connections was telling us, well, you know, the two weeks, the missed two weeks, the missed consecutive two pickups. Over four weeks. Is subject to a credit. But only as it pertains to garbage. And they're actually correct there. It does not pertain to recycling and yard waste. However, your Waste Connections continues to communicate to customers. Who call that have missed those yard waste pickups, that they will provide them a credit if they, if they, if they do call. So we've received some calls there. And if we haven't already passed that on, we'll be passing that, that, that on, on to them. And then lastly, on, I believe it's Thursday, the twenty-seventh, yes, Thursday, the twenty-seventh, from eight AM to noon. Association of Washington Cities is going to have their annual city action days. You know, an opportunity for all the elected leaders in the two hundred and eighty-one cities and towns of Washington State. To get a feel for what's going on down in Olympia as it relates to the legislative session. Unfortunately, it's a virtual session, but again, it's. A W C does a fantastic job in, in, in pulling these events together and. So I would highly recommend that you attend and if you need some assistance, signing up for that and. Getting engaged in that, let us know and we'll be helped, we'll be more than happy to, to help you with that. And with that, Mayor, that's, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Caulfield? Lots of stuff going on there. So thank you for getting the Tactical Taylor. Project wrapped up. That's a great one. Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, regarding the. Dozen or so officers who are going to be. Running the pilot for the body cameras. Given that that's going to create some of the work we anticipated. But where are we at on hiring the non-police officers that were going to be necessary for the full implementation of that program? Are any of them going to be hired during this pilot period?
A customer, Branstadter, those two positions have already been hired, the prosecuting attorney. And the office assistants for public records. So they were onboarded late last year and are in the process of. Of coming online on a parallel track with all of this. So this is all going to come together from an operational standpoint quite nicely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments? Well, thank you. It's been a busy week. If not, we will now turn to city council comments. Council member Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of information tonight, really good information, very clear and concise. I think that the. Partners for Parks information is really exciting. I look forward to seeing how that is going to transpire and play out. And also I've used Code Red before, so I think that that's really good product and it will be really. Beneficial to the residents to use and to encourage them to sign up and they'll be able to get a lot of information. So just wanted to say. Great presentations, very understandable, very digestible, and thank you to the staff for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. Sat in on the planning commission meeting last week. They went over the Tillicum. Neighborhood Community Plan and. They're looking to update that and they went over the same buildable lands report that we got tonight. So. They, those are the two things that happened there. And then Thursday night was P C R C with the mayor and myself. And that's when they talked about the next round of transportation funding. I think the good news for us in there is that you actually are getting. They're doing extra points this year. They have new categories, two, two, for points. And one is, is equity and, and the other is safety. So I don't know how we'll do on the safety side, but I imagine we'll do better than a number of other cities on the equity side. There was some debate around the, not just those two items being added. Some of the smaller cities are a little bit exercised about their ability to get money. So we'll, we'll see how it goes. I believe the, the, the documents are now in the possession of our staff. And we'll go from there with the. So hopefully we'll, we'll come out with something this year. So that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're. On a good timeline to get the ad hoc committee on tree preservation ready to do their work, which will help us. Allow us to get it done, that, reach the end of that process in the time that we, that we, that we want to be able to go and do and. So maybe in, in two weeks we'll have that. And, and I think the. The list had some new names and some familiar names on it, so I'm glad to see. See what our subcommittee comes up with, with a recommendation to do that. The other thing is I. Still need just a little bit more money donated from the group of us. To be able to put together the. Funding that we, to match the funding from the Lions Club for a scholarship for our quality communities. Scholarship. Nominees to be able to provide that local scholarship tour as we've been able to do for the past five years. So if you. Are, are, are able and willing to, to make such a donation, if you could. You'd get a check to me either by getting in my box in the council office or even mailing it to me, that'd be fine. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. On that, Mr. Branstadter, would the check be made payable to you or to the Lions Club, just for?
Make it to the Lakewood First Lions Club, because they're going to. Then be the ones that would monitor and, and do the financial accountability to award the scholarship through. University Financial Aid Office.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Branstadter, thank you for reminding me of, of that, because I told, it's totally slipped my mind. So, thank you. I'm, I'm excited about the Barnes restoration. That, I think that's going to provide a lot more opportunity for events to happen. For people that are not able to do the big pieces of that. So I'm looking forward to that and I've. I've worked with the Partners for Parks fundraising group before with Sydney Coats. And they do a fantastic job, so I have no doubt that they are going to be successful in this. And Mr. Grove, I think it was, that talked about the support of the staff. I attended the seven eleven ribbon cutting this morning and they could not praise the city staff enough. It was on and on about how helpful they had been with them. So I wanted to make sure I pass that on. To you. They did have a soft opening this morning with the ribbon cutting, but the grand opener is tomorrow morning, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, you can make it by that. I would love to see you. They were very, very warm people. And the place is actually, it looks really nice. And to get in and out of there is not complicated at all. So.
That's great.
Yeah, looks great. Thank you.
Well, thank you for going today. Appreciate that.
You bet.
As Mr. Bokey indicated, well, actually, Mr. Anderson, you're next.
Thank you. I received a certificate today from. The county executive city Lakewood congratulating us on. Being active participants in Pals Plus. Kind of as a prototype. It was a long trip for presentation. I found it on my chair. I, I too am excited about going forward on. On the barn project. With respect to what's going on in Olympia, as you watch. And it's, it's very active. There are a lot of things going a lot of different ways. One phenomenon that's different according to insiders is that. Bills are being deconstructed instead of adding things on to bills. They're taking bills like the missing middle bill and they're blowing them apart. And the repairian bill, you know, first the tribal consultation went out and then some definition goes out. When they're finding things objectionable. It's, it's a strange phenomena. Maybe it's somebody wants to say that. We passed something, so they'll, they'll take different elements of a bill and set it out. In fragments, which is actually probably pretty good. You get, you might get less bad things than supposed to a poorly crafted. Big bill, but it's just an interesting phenomenon to watch. And finally, with respect to Tactical Taylor, congratulations. Mr. Caulfield and staff and Bill, you know, he's put a lot of time in it. So we're. There's a litany of people to thank and, and I recall three, none of whom will be listening, but who, who really helped out on this. The first is former county council chair and Lakewood mayor Doug Richardson, who was the one who. Made sure that there was at least some money in the budget. Devoted to the Clear Zone, so it made it a fiscal priority. To some extent for the county and, and enhance that participation. I, I think in some ways that was more helpful with respect to convincing the feds that there was a local support that needed the money itself. And then a couple of people back in D C. The former assistant secretary of the Air Force, John Henderson for installations, environment and energy. Who was the one who instructed his staff to D dorket. And really got the Air Force to concede that, yes, it was their monetary problem. And, and that freed up. And the other person who was probably first in line in helping with money. Was the rep program director, Kirsten Skarsgård Spence. Who actually rattled some money from one by any moment to the other and said, well, I'm saving that for you. So there are all sorts of pieces going on. There's people in Washington, you see a base, the city, county, the state. Truly a team effort and. It takes a lot of people to get something as complex accomplished and. But the focal point was always the administration at City Lakewood. So it wouldn't have happened without John and Bill and their folks. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I will tag on a thank you to you, Mr. Anderson, for assisting in that. I know we went back to D C several times and. I was perplexed for the first several years when we would go back and talk to folks at the Pentagon and it was always like. Not my problem, their problem, Army, Air Force. And finally, after years. We got folks to start communicating with one another to come up with some solutions. So. Thank you and Mr. Caulfield for your leadership in getting this. Off-center as well. Also excited tonight about the Partners for Parks proposal. I look forward to that. I would love to see us figure out a way to kind of. Move the needle sooner than later. I know process is process, but it would be lovely. To see something get done sooner than the next fifteen years, which I, I hope, and it sounds like it will, but it, it's fifteen years to get to this point. I hope the next. Four or five see significant progress in ribbon cutting. I was at the Pierce County Regional Council with Mr. Bokey last Thursday. He already commented on that. This week will prove to be busy on. Tuesday, tomorrow, I'm going to attend from his farmer, the Shape Board Work Planning subgroup. With regard to regional housing solutions and issues, and I'll report back to you all on that. On Wednesday. Having the Horizon Economic Forecast. It's a chamber event downtown that'll talk about. Regional impacts to our economy that are on the horizon, should be a very interesting event and certainly. I'll report back on that as well. And then on Thursday, we're having the first sort of coffee house with the mayor. You may have seen a flyer on that. This is an effort to try to engage more members of the public in a time slot that might be more convenient for people. And hopefully when we get through the COVID era, it might be actually a more fun engaging opportunity for neighbors and folks to get together with some of us. And certainly a staff member on a topic de jour, so to speak. So that we can really dig in and have some back and forth communication and dialogue as opposed to just public comment, which is good. And helpful, but I think having dialogue will even be more constructive and meeting people. Hopefully at their needs uh, with us in a sort of a, a light and fun and uh, I think hopefully. A better opportunity to engage. I, I hope there's some fruit, but we shall see. Anyway, the first one is on Thursday. It will feature an overview of parks and recreation and facilities likely including the barn project. This Thursday at six o'clock. On Friday. Hopefully there's nothing more on Friday. It's going to be a busy week, but on uh, Friday, I, I tentatively have a site visit on the Bus Rapid Transit route with Pierce Transit. There are uh, continuing discussions on the, the design. Work between the city of Tacoma and Pierce Transit with regard to the route. So more to follow on that, but. There are potentially some delays that might impact some federal funding. Hopefully not. I invited them. If they have problems, they can go to B R T two and come to Lakewood. We'd be happy to welcome them with open arms. But uh, that may not happen in the near, in the, in the near future. That is all I have. And unless anyone else has any alibis for the good of the order. We're adjourned.